Okay, good evening, everybody. I will now call this regular meeting of the Fayette County Board of Education to order. Pursuant to KRS 61, notice is hereby given that on January 21st, 2022, the Chair of the Fayette County Board of Education called a special meeting of the Board for Monday, January 24th, 2022 at 6:00 p.m. This notice serves to advise the community and media that this is the Board's regular January meeting but is being specially noticed as some Board members will appear via video teleconference. The meeting will be livestreamed at fcps.net/virtualmeeting for public viewing. And in the alternative, pursuant to KRS 61.826, Section 2, Subsection B, the John D. Price Building, 450 Park Place, Room 150, is hereby designated as the primary location of the meeting at which members of the public can also watch the video teleconference meeting. At this time, I will ask Ms. Daley to please take role.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Ms. Amy Green.
Present.
Mr. Tom Jones.
Present.
Ms. Kristi Morris.
Present.
Mr. Tyler Murphy.
Present.
Ms. Stephanie Spires.
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Daley. I'd like to welcome everyone who's joining us for tonight's meeting, both in person and online. Next on our agenda, we will observe a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance and reading of the mission statement led by Vice Chair Amy Green. We would also like to acknowledge the tragic loss, as we pause for a moment of silence this evening, of six members of the Fayette County Public Schools' family since our December Action Meeting. Deborah Kaiser, who was a special education teacher at Wellington Elementary School, and her daughter Emma Kaiser, who had worked in the after-school program at Wellington; Kayla Jones, who was an after-school program employee at Garden Springs Elementary; Myra Hawley, an eighth grader at Lees Town Middle School; Larry Perez Morales, a ninth grader at Tates Creek High School; and Jacques Campbell, who served as a nighttime custodian at Claysmill Elementary School. Our hearts remain with their families and all those touched by their passing. Vice Chair Green.
Please join me for a moment of silence. You can stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic, the which is fair, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. The mission of Fayette County Public Schools is to create a collaborative community that ensures all students achieve at high levels and graduate propelled to excel, prepared to excel in a global society.
Thank you, Board Member Green. Next, I will accept a motion to adopt the agenda for tonight's meeting. Before entertaining a motion, I would like to point out that after having several conversations with Dr. Liggins regarding the proposed amended academic calendar for 2022-2023, we have decided to have a second reading of the calendar, a proposed amended calendar during this meeting, instead of voting on it tonight. And then after tonight's meeting, the Calendar Committee will reconvene to discuss the amendments, possibly making additional changes, and then bringing the calendar back before the Board for its consideration. That being said, I will entertain a motion at this time to adopt the agenda for tonight's meeting as presented. Motion by Board Member Spires. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Board Member Morris. Questions on approval of the agenda as indicated. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. We like to open our school board meetings by spotlighting our talented students and high-quality arts instruction here in FCPS. The performances are recorded instead of live because of space limitations here at the new central office. But tonight, we welcome the Tates Creek High School Orchestra. The advanced orchestra performed "Hidden Dimensions" as part of their December area concert. The composer describes the piece as "a musical exploration of the hidden dimensions of space and time." The students are under the direction of Mr. Ben McWhorter. Please enjoy our Tates Creek High School Orchestra. Thank you to our students at Tates Creek High School and Mr. McWhorter for that excellent performance. There's so much work that goes in beyond just what we see in these clips for both the students and the staff, so we greatly appreciate seeing those showcased here during our Board meetings. At this time, I'll turn the agenda over to Superintendent Demetrius Liggins for the superintendent's report.
Well, thank you, Chair Murphy, and thank you to the students and staff from Tates Creek High School for that wonderful performance. Before beginning our report this evening, I would like to add my own welcome to all of those that are joining us this evening. Communities across the nation traditionally observe School Board Recognition Month each January, recognizing their local elected Board members for their service. And I admit, I'm a little biased, but I can't think of a team more worthy than this one to be celebrated. And so, with no further ado, we have several people here this evening who have agreed and would like to say a few words to us. Vice President, Board Chair Tyler Murphy, Vice Chair Amy Green, Board Member Stephanie Spires, Tom Jones, and Kristi Morris represent more than just the neighborhoods from which they were elected. These individuals are committed to ensuring a world-class education for every child in our community. Their service plays a vital role in building Lexington for future generations. In recognition of their responsibility, Lexington Fayette Urban County Vice Mayor Steve Kay will share a few thoughts and read a proclamation honoring the Board members.
Thank you, Superintendent, and thank you, all Board members. I really appreciate the opportunity to be with you tonight. I want to start by saying that the veterans at the school system will know that I'm no stranger to the school system. I had the privilege of serving on a number of projects that involve internal communications and community engagement over the years, so I am familiar with the work you do and I greatly appreciate it. I also know that in any year, in any set of years, the challenges you face are really significant. And I often tell people when they say about my service as a council member that it's a thankless job, and I say, "Well, not compared to the school board." We have some difficult issues, but it seems like all of your issues are difficult. And I know, and I've paid attention, and I've watched you kind of rise to the occasion time after time to meet the challenges, not only of the usual, but what the COVID has brought to us. So I appreciate all of that. And I should have started by saying, I'm here representing Mayor Gordon, who could not be with you tonight because she is still recovering from a mild case of COVID breakthrough. So just a reminder that we're still kind of in COVID times. I do have with me a proclamation, and I would like to read that at this time. So for those of you who are familiar with proclamations, there are a few "whereas"s that I have to read before I get to the heart of the matter, but whereas, "The mission of the public schools is to meet the educational needs of all children and to empower them to become competent, productive contributors to the democratic society in an ever-changing world. And whereas, local school board members are committed to children and believe that all children can be successful learners and that the best education is tailored to the individual needs of the child. And whereas, local school board members work closely with parents, educational professionals, staff, and other community members to create the education vision we want for all our students. And whereas, local school board members are strong advocates for public education. And whereas, over the course of 2021, the Fayette County Board of Education met more than 50 times," and I'll pause here, it's not in the written proclamation, "but kudos to all of you for above and beyond. Fifty meetings is significant. "Met more than 50 times, showing a commitment to listening to stakeholders, returning to in-person learning, and finding a superintendent to match the vision and the values of the community. And whereas, we recognize and thank Superintendent Demetrius Liggins and the members of the Fayette County Board of Education, including Chair Tyler Murphy, Vice Chair Amy Green, and Members Kristi Morris, Tom Jones, and Stephanie Spires for their dedication to serving the residents of Fayette County. Now, therefore, I, Mayor Gordon, on her behalf, Mayor of Lexington, to hereby declare January 2022 School Board Recognition Month. Thank you."
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Beyond our elected officials, we have important civic leaders in our community who work closely with the school board. Representing our community at large tonight is Commerce Lexington Board Chair Ray Daniels, one of the few people in Fayette County who knows firsthand how hard it is to be a school board member.
Thank you, Superintendent, and I am the immediate past chair, but I'm stepping in for the board chair this evening. First of all, I want to bring greetings to the Board, Board Chair Tyler, Vice Chair Green, Board Member Morris, Spires, and Jones. As Superintendent mentioned, I am very familiar with the role and the task that you guys have committed yourselves to, and we are very grateful for your service. On behalf of Commerce Lexington and CEO Bob Quick, we are very honored and thankful just to be here in the presence of you guys on this evening. We are thankful for your commitment to our students, to our teachers, to our parents, and to our community. We are thankful for the relationship that we have with Fayette County Public Schools and our business community. We are thankful for the academies that we are very proud of. We are also thankful for all of the great things that are to come in 2022. We just wanted to essentially say, and Bob wanted me to make sure I shared, that it is very vital and very important that we maintain this great relationship, workforce, retention, training, all vital to the growth of our community, and we are committed in any way we can to assist the school board and the superintendent going forward. So once again, kudos to you guys, thank you for your service, and onward, and have a great 2022.
Thank you, Ray. We value our partnership as well with Commerce Lexington. I look forward to accomplishing great things for students in our community together. In addition to community partners, our Board plays an important role in encouraging collaboration with families. Here to say a few words about that this evening is 16th District PTA President Susan Vogel Song.
Thank you. My name is Susan Vogel Song, and besides being the president of the 16th District PTA, I am a parent of four with three children in Fayette County Schools. Nothing in the past 22 months has come easy as we navigate the uncharted waters of the pandemic. This school board has waded into territory unfamiliar to most of us and spent countless hours analyzing and considering data and how to set policy in the best interest of all children. Regardless of where you may fall in the debate of masking, vaccination, or social distancing, it's hard not to acknowledge and appreciate a school board that has met 51 times in the last year alone. Not every decision is popular, and certainly most decisions are not easy, but we thank you for keeping the dialogue respectful, considerate, and professional because our children are watching, and they can see and hear this. Thank you for your time, your commitment, service, and dedication, and as a representative of the Fayette County Public Schools 16th District PTA Board, I look forward to working with you in the future.
Thank you, Susan. Families are our students first and most influential teachers and truly are our partners in all that we do in school. Another critical constituency is for our Fayette County Board of Education is our incredible employees. Representing their voices this evening, we have three speakers, beginning with Jessica Hyler, President of the Fayette County Education Association.
It was a really long walk. Good evening. I know all of you, and you all know me, but my name is Jessica Hyler, and I'm the president of the Fayette County Education Association. Last year, in the last year, this board has seen many changes, from two new board members, a new superintendent, and Board Member Spires, a brand-new baby. He's adorable, by the way. 2021 is full of challenges for our district and for a board that was trying to find their way as a new team. During this time of transition, I never doubted that you had the best interest of our community as your number-one priority. I sit in the audience here at least twice a month and see the thoughtfulness that you put into each decision. You carefully weigh what is best for our students and staff after what I can imagine are countless hours of reading and researching and listening to all of us. The decisions you make here are not always popular, but you keep the best interests of our students and staff as your top priority. On behalf of the members of the Fayette County Education Association, I thank you for the work you do to support our staff and to ensure our students have access to a high-quality public education. On a personal note, as a parent of a child in FCPS, a recent FCPS graduate, and an FCPS graduate myself, I appreciate you for continuing the excellence here in FCPS.
Thank you, Jessica. Our next guest is Barbara Priest, a paraeducator at Julie Marks Elementary School and Secretary of the Fayette County Educational Support Professional Association.
Good evening. Hi, my name is Barbara Priest, and I am a kindergarten paraeducator at Julia Smarx Elementary. Each day, I lay the foundation, help teach our youngest students how to read, write, and to count. I am the Secretary of the Fayette County Educational Support Professional Association, and on behalf of our members, I am honored to be here to thank you, the Board members of the Fayette County Board of Education. We are thankful to have a superintendent and a Board of Education that value the work and the effort from classified staff members. We are the bus drivers, school bus monitors, school secretaries, paraeducators, custodians, and cafeteria workers. Classified staff are the backbone of our school system. Thank you, Board members, for providing certified and classified staff with a raise for the first time in five years. Thank you for giving classified staff a step up in pay for previous experience. Thank you for working with Superintendent Liggins to find a temporary solution to the bus driver shortage. We look forward to working together to find a permanent solution. We are also thankful that we received a full week off on Thanksgiving break and a full week for Fall Break next calendar year. The Fayette County Professional Support Association appreciates you all. We appreciate our Board members. Thank you for your time and your commitment to Fayette County students, families, and all employees of Fayette County Public Schools.
Thank you, Ms. Priest, and sorry for mispronouncing your name earlier. Our support professionals really do play an integral role in our school district, and we are honored to have a speaker now from AFT 120 with us tonight. Please welcome Dr. Jenny Bolander, Henry Clay High School Special Education Teacher and founding member of our newest employee advocacy organization.
Good evening, hi. Our group, Kentucky 120 United AFT, would like to send our heartfelt gratitude to the Fayette County Public School Board during School Board Appreciation Week. To be a decision-maker in any school system since March of 2020, but especially ours, has been an unenviable position to be in, to be sure. You have had to navigate a pandemic, quarantines, remote learning, and NTI. You've patiently and considerately handled parent, community, student, and staff concerns, questions, fears, threats, and demands. You've taken on the terribly difficult task of navigating our district through the untimely death of our superintendent and the hiring of one. You've gotten off to a fantastic start. You've done thousands of things most will never know about and spent countless hours away from the people you love and the things you love doing, all in the name of making sure Fayette County Public Schools provides a world-class education to every student who walks through their doors, and for that, we are deeply grateful. Generally, weeks of appreciation come with a token or a gift of some sort. When reflecting on what would be an appropriate gift, it dawned on us that the perfect gift we could give you to show our appreciation would be to ask for our community's help. We have all watched as you've done the impossible balancing acts, juggling current science and recommendations of health officials with public demands that often found themselves at odds. We are so thankful that every decision you have made has been with the health, safety, and well-being of students and staff in mind while always considering what is best for student learning and growth. But no matter your efforts, Fayette County still claims three of the 63 as of last Saturday education personnel deaths from COVID, and at least one student death, and we have many, many more still suffering the effects of long COVID. Several of our members wanted to be here with us tonight to say thank you in person but are currently either at home with COVID or taking care of their children who have COVID. I'm convinced that if there were a magic COVID dust we could sprinkle at our school doors, you all would have found it and have a deep supply and back stock, but unfortunately, that magic dust doesn't exist. Kentucky 120 United AFT stands with you in our deep desire to remain in person with our students, but you can't do it alone, and neither can we. We are asking, no, we are begging during the School Board Appreciation Week, we are begging the community for their help, help that will keep us in person, teaching and learning, and the school doors open. We have to, we must act with fidelity as a community here because there is no magic dust. We need every member of our community to mask with fidelity in public places. We need everyone who still has vaccine hesitancy to get off Google and get to your doctor, the one you've trusted with every health decision, from strep throat to broken arms. And if you're still hesitant for whatever reason, talk to them and trust them. But with a highly communicable airborne disease, we have to, we absolutely must have the community's help if we want to remain in person, which we very much do. We are begging the community to mask up and talk to their doctors about the vaccine if they have not already done so. We cannot do this alone. Our amazing board can't do this alone. So if we want to stay in person, which we are begging to be able to do, we need the community's help. It's the best gift we can give them for Board Appreciation Week. Half efforts won't cut it. It will take all of us doing our part. So to any of the members of the community, please join us in honoring this board and their work by helping us because we cannot do it without you. Thank you.
Thank you, Jenny. Educational research shows that aside from the classroom teacher, the most influential school-level factor in student success is the principal. Here in Fayette County, we have incredibly talented leaders, and to address the Board this evening, on their behalf is Julie Strange, Wellington Elementary School Principal and Vice President of the Fayette County Association of School Administrators.
Good evening, Board members and Dr. Liggins. As Dr. Liggins introduced, I'm Julie Strange, and I'm the Vice President of the Fayette County Association of School Administrators, also known as FCASSA. I also serve the families and students of Wellington Elementary as a proud principal. I would like to thank and recognize you, our Board members, on behalf of FCASSA for ongoing support of high levels of teaching and learning in Fayette County Public Schools. To say we have all had a great many challenges is an understatement, to say the least. As a Board, you have faced and overcome many unique challenges, including but certainly not limited to ensuring we had strong leadership in place last January after Superintendent Cox's unexpected passing, reopening our schools last February and March, and working alongside health officials to ensure our schools are safe for staff and students to be able to continue in-person learning this fall. You've been supportive of providing funding and resources to schools You've been supportive of providing funding and resources to schools and our organization as we face challenge after challenge during the COVID-19 pandemic. Thank you, board, for the inordinate amount of time you have given to listening and learning about the needs of our students, staff, and families when conducting a nationwide search for a superintendent. You've remained open and receptive to continuous improvement efforts, and your partnership with Dr. Liggins in decision-making and participation in the development of the FCPS strategic plan have not gone unnoticed. Dr. Liggins, thank you for providing opportunities for stakeholder input in this important work and being responsive to the many needs in our schools and our community. FCASA thanks you and our school board for the focus that remains on supporting our schools during what continues to be an incredibly challenging time in all of our lives. You have remained collectively committed to setting and maintaining high expectations for teaching and learning in Fayette County, helping to make the city of Lexington an even more attractive place for businesses and families to thrive. Again, the Fayette County Association of School Administrators would like to share our sincere appreciation for the time, commitment, and dedication that you give to making our district the very best it can be. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. Schools throughout the district sent tokens of appreciation to our board members tonight. One school in particular, Julius Marks Elementary, created a video for the board. We were so impressed with their work that we built onto their video and that idea to include students from other grade levels and schools throughout the community to ensure we have representation from each school board district. We hope you enjoy it.
Thank you, school board members, for creating a safe environment for us in the school. And thank you for the school that I go to currently.
Maybe we will come back to the video.
I'm sorry, I thought I was screen sharing. Let me try again.
There's no volume.
Thank you, school board members, for creating...
Thank you, Mr. Murphy, for making a big impact.
Thank you!
Thank you, school board members, for creating a safe environment for us in the school, and thank you for supporting alternative programs like the school that I go to currently. And I just want to say thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Green, for helping students succeed.
I am incredibly thankful for SCAPA for serving as a community for me to go to when I am having trouble with things in school that I'm not as confident in as I am in theater, and that I've had such opportunities to grow in school, and I'm very thankful for that. I'm happy that at the school I was at before, there were also classes to take where I could learn about theater to prep me to be somewhere like this, so I'm thankful that the school board has offered me that.
Thank you, Ms. Ashman Spires, for investing in our future.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Your sacrifices won't go unnoticed.
The students and staff at EJ Hayes Middle School appreciate Mr. Jones for serving as a board member and using his years of experience and education to provide leadership for our schools.
Thank you, Ms. Morris, for putting kids first.
I'd just like to thank all the board members and everyone who's made it possible to continue coming to school and just, despite everything we've been through, just continue seeing each other and getting to learn in whatever way we can.
And to close out our celebrations this evening, I would really like to acknowledge and recognize the challenging year that we've had and we've been through. In the last 12 months, this board continued to lead through the unexpected passing of a superintendent, the transitioning to an interim superintendent, launching a superintendent search, finding creative ways to gather the voices of all stakeholders on that search during a pandemic, returning students and staff to in-person learning, and hiring a new superintendent. Of course, it goes to say, I think they made the right choice there, but in all seriousness, it is truly an honor to work with each of you. Ms. Morris, I love your focus on equity and your unwavering commitment to ensuring that the least of us are taken into consideration in every decision you make. I was one of those children you fight for, and it's humbling to see leaders like you in action. Mr. Jones, I absolutely appreciate your attention to detail and your curiosity to understand the why. You have devoted your life to education and your consistent commitment to making decisions that are ultimately in the best interest of all students is truly inspirational. Ms. Green, working with someone like you, who is such a thoughtful leader, is truly a privilege. You don't shy away from asking the tough questions, and that makes our team stronger. Ms. Spires, being new to the district, I really appreciate your knowledge base and your historical experience. You have the rare ability to paint a picture of how the past is connected with both the present and the future in the work and decision-making. And Mr. Murphy, you've truly stepped into your role as a board chair, and I'm grateful for the commitment to the team of six and your determination to work collaboratively to create a high-functioning team that can be an example of excellent school board governance throughout the state and nation. It is hard to believe that we're still just shy of our first six months together as a board and superintendent team. I mean, given the fact that the state requires the school boards to meet 12 times a year, and this board met 50 times last year, I should have known what I was getting myself into at the time. Belovedy aside, this board works hard. This board cares about our students and our staff, and this board is serving for the right reasons. You embrace your role in helping shape the future in our community by impacting the most critical industry within it, which is indeed education, and you focus on the people who will have the most long-term impact on it, which are our students. So thank you. Next, under the superintendents' report this evening, I would like to introduce representatives from the Fayette Education Foundation to share information on their work and support of FCPS. Please join me in welcoming Carrie Bowling, the Executive Director of the Fayette Education Foundation, Alan Stein, immediate past Chair of the Fayette Education Foundation Board of Directors, and Dr. Rodney Jackson, Chair-elect of the Fayette Education Foundation Board of Directors.
Thank you, Dr. Liggins, Chairman Murphy, Vice Chair Green, and let's see, we've also got Ms. Morris, Mr. Jones, and Ms. Spires. Thank you all so much for inviting us today. I'm Alan Stein, the past Chair of the Fayette Education Foundation. Many of you know me as a baseball guy, so you'll understand that I'm here as a pinch hitter tonight. Our current chairperson, Jeff Kuntz, couldn't be with us because he too is following protocols having contracted COVID, and I guess there will be very few presentations over the course of the next couple of months where we don't say something like that. We just want to add our appreciation to, to the great work, the constant daily work of the Board of Education and our superintendent. We recognize as advocates for our students and our staff and administration, faculty, how much work goes into it, and so we want to add our voices to those voices of appreciation tonight. Thank you so much for inviting us here, and I'll give you a quick overview of what we have been doing as the Fayette Education Foundation. We'll try to be brief, and at the end of our presentation, we'll be more than happy to answer any questions that you may have directly. So joining me, as Dr. Liggins pointed out, we have our incoming chairperson, Dr. Rodney Jackson, who will speak to you briefly this evening, as will our Executive Director, Carrie Bowling. Are we, we have slides?
Yeah, next slide.
Okay, great. The Fayette Education Foundation is a nonprofit charitable organization that raises funds to support and serve the students of Fayette County Public Schools. We strive to fulfill the unmet educational needs and remove any and all barriers to opportunities. We focus on equity, our initiative support access to resources and opportunities for all students. Next slide, please. Just a quick timeline, in January of 2020, the Steering Committee was established. That Steering Committee included myself as Chair, Carla Blanton, Steve Byers, Bethany Denning, Judge Melissa Murphy, Kim Walters-Parker, and Yahari West, and we established a vision at that time to help establish the foundation. The work was based on the belief that the cornerstone of a strong community is a quality public education system, and that a vibrant and prosperous community is inextricably linked to the value its community members place on quality education. It's important to note, I'll add at this point, as a past chairperson of Commerce Lexington, that the business community has always been a significant and dramatic supporter of public education here in Fayette County. One of the things that we learned during the years, particularly under the year that I was chairman of the board, when our support was so vital for the establishment of the academies of Lexington, we heard from so many business people to whom we reached out that it was very difficult sometimes to make contributions, both in terms of energy, manpower, and in resources and dollars to the bureaucracy of a large system like Fayette County Public Schools. So we began to start thinking about, how can we make that easier for those in the community, particularly representing those in the business community, to be able to have an impact on supporting and augmenting the great work that the board does? So the foundation was formed. As a part of our strategic plan, our goal is to ensure that our board mirrors the diversity of Fayette County Public Schools and their enrollment. Our board members bring diverse backgrounds, ages, and beliefs to the table, and we include on our board two high school students themselves. Carrie, our executive director, is a former elementary school teacher and longtime nonprofit professional. She is our entire staff, our one and only employee, and her focus has been to startup, research, fundraising, and doing all the programs that we have begun to put together. Our strategic planning process took several months, and as everything else during COVID, it was all by Zoom, so you can imagine how that process went. We looked at district data, the district's strategic plan, the portrait of a graduate, the report from the Mayor's Commission for Racial Justice and Equality, and most recently, reexamined our goals and compared them to the work of the most recent Fayette County Public Schools' strategic planning sessions. Next slide, please. You can see from this slide that we have already raised over $100,000, $113,000 in private dollars that have been raised since the inception. It's important to note that 48% of that came from individuals, and 52% came from businesses and other organizations. Of course, we were extraordinarily pleased to be able to get started with the seed money that was committed from the first year's school board of $100,000 in order for us to be able to just get up and running, the basics that go into that, and we have been able to make already $13,000 in a limited amount of investments for programs that Carrie will refer to later. We have 100% of our board has made a commitment and has been giving to these contributions. We met our first-year goal of 100 individual non-corporate donors in the first nine months. We're very proud of that. We've received lead corporate gifts from Wes Banko and Toyota, amongst many other corporate partners, and most recently, Valvoline has joined the mix by funding our classroom grant program that Carrie will discuss very briefly. Seed money from the Board of Education has been critical to our early success. With it, we're able to stabilize and focus on students. 93% of the first year's investment that you made has been used exclusively for the basics: salary, website development, media presence, as well as normal business startup costs, even though those that include for a nonprofit business, including printing, memberships, some equipment purchases like ink and paper and those things. And so with that, I'm going to turn it over now, I guess Carrie, you're next, with the next slide. I just do want to say, before I do that, very quickly, that we have come at this from not just an altruistic perspective, but from a business one. We all recognize, not just those of us in the foundation, but the entire community and business community recognizing the value of a great education and what that turns into as an economic driver for our community. So we understand return on investment, if you will, and ROI is significantly important. You can see that for the original $100,000 investment, we've already returned back over $100,000 that we've been able to raise just in our first nine months, and when we look at this long term, and we're hopeful that we'll be able to continue the initial seed money for a couple to three years, but when we get beyond that, that's a finite number. The return on investment will continue to grow. We anticipate raising anywhere from 150 to 300, then to $500,000 a year, and on toward $1 million a year. And the investment that you're making, this $100,000 that we've already received, and we're hopeful that that can be a little bit... we're hopeful that that can be a little bit more, is going to grow into what we believe will be millions of private dollars that we'll be able to raise and use to support and augment the great work that you do. So, Kerry?
Um, Rodney, we're probably going to have to kind of, I'm just, just, I believe last year when we met with you all, in front of you all, we, we had just finished our strategic planning session, so just wanted to share with you how we divided it up. I mean, it's a daunting task, as you all know, and we know we can't do everything. And so, we were, you know, in working with all three superintendents that we had worked with over the past year, and, and really getting a lot of input from the community, we, we really divided, decided to divide it up in three areas. So, classrooms in schools, students and families, and the future. And as you see, the word access is, is in all, well, at least two out of three, but the future, we're also talking about access to opportunities for students in their college career and life. So, I'm going to add on, we had mentioned earlier, I too am a product of Fayette County Public Schools. I taught in Fayette County Public Schools. I'm a parent to children, I have one child still in Fayette County Public Schools, and I still get excited when school starts. I still want to buy all the, you know, supplies and, and get, you know, get excited for that back to school. So, this is really just a culmination of a, of really a dream for me to be able to give back to the district that's given so much to me. And it's just exciting, and we really appreciate having the partnership and, and working with the community and working with, with the district to make this happen. So, next slide, we're going to go into just a little bit of detail on what's implemented and ongoing, and then sort of what's in development in these three areas.
Oh, my boy's with Kerry, I think.
Good evening. Now, Alan kind of told you who we are and how we came to be. Kerry's kind of outlined our priorities, so I'll be discussing with you what we've done so far, what we're continually doing, and Kerry will kind of share with you what we doing in the future. So, as far as implemented and ongoing, we serve as a conduit for individuals, organizations, and businesses to support the academic achievement in Fayette County Public Schools. We also coordinate pro bono coaching projects for teachers and administrators in Fayette County Public Schools called the Inspiring, the Inspiring Leaders Program.
So, with those two, yeah, I know, this is what's going to be, no, I don't know, no, Alan, we want you to stay. What, so, so with those two areas, if you all want some details or examples of those things at the end, let us know, because we're trying to keep everybody's time, you know, respectful. What's in development is we've got what we've called our Bright Ideas Grant Program or BIG. It's a classroom grant program for innovative ideas for teachers, schools. It's not, you know, if the custodian at the school has an idea, you know, it, really any school employee is eligible to apply on behalf of their, their school. Secondly, and really folk, our main focus is, is going to be enhancing kindergarten readiness. We look at the same data that you all see, and, and I've heard Dr. Liggins say it over and over, and as a former elementary school teacher, I get it. We know that these kids are, a lot of these kids are coming in, and they're playing catch-up from, from day one. So, we figure we can look at some resources that, before the kids even get to school. Dolly Parton's Imagination Library was around years ago. It's gone away, but now we're in talks to get that back up and going. That's free books for children, focusing really on neighborhoods, and are some of our feeder schools, theater neighborhoods, where some of our children are maybe a little further behind than others. The other thing that we are, we are looking at, and we've identified three elementary schools based on kindergarten readiness scores and their English language learner population, where we really want to focus work with their site-based decision-making groups, the principals. What are some things we can do to help them get those kids excited and ready to learn? And, and even before they get in there. Hopefully, this universal pre-K will happen from our state, if anybody's listening there, but we know that there's so much more we can do before them. And one other major issue, I guess, issue we've identified along these lines is recruitment strategies for effective and diverse staff. We know that our children perform and learn better when they have something in common, either the way they look, their, their backgrounds, their way they learn with our, our teachers. And so, we want to make sure that we are helping the district do whatever it can to get the most effective and diverse staff in here. You know, I've, again, going back to my, bringing myself up through the district as a, as a student, as a teacher, and as a parent, I cannot say how happy I have been with all of the opportunities we've had in the teacher. So, we've got a great staff. Now, we've got to get, you know, it's hard, teachers are harder to come by these days, so we got to make sure we get the best and the brightest and the most diverse. So, next, we're going to talk about students and families, and Rodney?
Another thing that we've implemented is that we provide the emergency discretionary grant funds to address the immediate and/or emergency needs of, of students and staff.
So, where that's been ongoing, we've, there are some things we've done, and again, we can get into details, just some backpack program for one of our local schools, food backpack. We had some opportunity to, at Quigley, and one of the examples, I'm going to bring it up, even though it didn't come into fruition, but Dr. Liggins had contacted me one afternoon and said, hey, you know, they really need interpreters in Western Kentucky, and we've got some staff, this was right before the winter break, we've got some staff that would be willing to go, but, you know, it's far, it's a drive, and, you know, there's mileage, and there might be other expenses, you know, feeding the volunteers. And so, really, within 14 hours, our Board had met, we had decided, and we had said, okay, if there's any money that we can make available, we will to, to, to cover those expenses. Again, it ended up not having, but obviously, we're able to move a little faster than, than you all can, just by, because of virtue of how we're, we're created. So, that's just an example of this discretionary and emergency funding opportunities. What's in development is working on, looking at high-intensity tutoring. When private funds can enhance program delivery. So, there are a lot of community partners out there, and that's who I spend a lot of my time talking to, is, is, you know, from the YMCA to, I mean, I feel like I'm, okay, I'm not trying to make the YMCA the best, but it is, it's one of the best. But there are lots of opportunities out there for us to partner and really engage our students outside of the class or the, you know, school day. Next is volunteerism and civic engagement. We know that's an important part of the Portrait of a Graduate. We know that those are things that we can do. We, you've got your staff, the district staff right now is working on some opportunities, and we are staying abreast of that, and we want to do whatever we can, again, to be able to use some private dollars to really get our kids engaged. And finally, the future. There you go.
Me?
Yeah.
I'm not much in.
Well, so, so the future, I'll go ahead, just scholarship, scholarship oversight and management. We've, a couple of times, we've mentioned the passing of Superintendent Cork, and what came from that is a, one of our scholarship opportunities. So, we're managing a scholarship in his memory. Last year was the first year, we'll be giving that away again. We've got another one called Celebrate Education and Diversity, which was new last year as well. We're managing that, along with the, some of the, we worked with the 16th District PTA last year and getting theirs out, and we've got a couple other opportunities brewing as well. So, people, we are just the easy way for people to get this done, and it's, you know, it's, I'm learning, and it's, it's been, it's been one of the most rewarding processes of anything I've done so far. What's in development along those lines? We have been contacted by Acesis, who is the state's partner for the 529 savings accounts and the Kentucky Higher Education Assistance Authority. And there are a couple of states have done some pilot programs around this, and we are looking at potentially, along with our early childhood development initiatives, looking at creating these 529 accounts for kids, you know, maybe as young as kindergarten, hoping that if they know that they have the opportunity for training and, and college and, and money set aside, and, and really just with some opportunity for them to get some additional money, you know, by showing up and going to financial literacy classes, or their parents coming to, you know, an open house about something. So, really looking at opportunities for some reward. The school-level solutions, we know that we've got, Alan's talked about the academy model that's at most of our schools, but we know that every school has needs, and particularly with access being an issue. So, how can we help work with each school and get, you know, people, again, that look like these kids in there saying, hey, you can be an engineer, you can be a medical assistant in all of the schools? And then, expanding financial literacy opportunities for students and families. We, that's just an ongoing, I need it at my house with my 16-year-old, and, but we know the, the earlier these kids learn, and again, all of this is kind of, you know, has to do with each other. So, that's, that's me talking as fast as I can about, about our three areas of strategic planning and what our programming is going to look like over the next one to three years. So, do you all have any questions about that in particular?
Here's a, in a nutshell, the Fayette Education Foundation has been formed and hopes to be able to support the work that is done at the School Board level, but being flexible and independent, and being able to attract, go out, solicit, and attract dollars, we believe that we can bring something to the table that, in most circumstances, would be very difficult to have. We work as an augment to the School Board. Of course, everything that we do will be vetted through the proper channels. We won't just be out willy-nilly doing thing. We will be working with you, but our independence and flexibility will give us the opportunity to be most impactful, and that's what we have created this foundation for. And now, we'll, any questions that you might have?
We appreciate all three of you taking the time to come and, and share this presentation with us. Any questions, Board members?
Chair Murphy, I just have a statement.
Board member Green.
I just want to recognize and say thank you for your, I lost my word, for your intentionality of, of every step along the way between building your board and creating the strategic plan and laying out your website is very user-friendly, and I'm excited, like you said, that you're landing space for a lot of, of the public space to come in and support the public school. So, I really appreciate the work you're doing. I look forward to hearing more and more about all the unique programs that you're going to offer to support our families and students and educators, and I just want to say thank you to you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Green. Any other questions or comments, Board members? And I echo what Vice Chair Green said. Thank you all again for the time, energy, effort. I know that a lot of, a lot of time and, and thought has gone into this work, and so we appreciate that. And we often say it takes a village to do the work that we do, and that is shown throughout what you all have demonstrated here this evening and the work that's ongoing. So, we certainly appreciate that.
We look, look forward to a continuing and, and robust partnership with you.
We appreciate all of you. Thank you.
Thank you.
And extend our appreciation to your entire Board as well.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Amy.
And our best to Chair Kuntz as well.
I hope he's watching.
Yeah.
Thank you, Kerry, Alan, and Rodney, and Board members. Next on our superintendent report, I'd like to ask Chief School Improvement Officer Carl Hayton to share a presentation on student data. I do believe his team is joining online, correct?
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Moore. Just make sure we're good to go. Thank you for joining us this evening. We're just going to review a bit of Board data, first, starting with assessment data around MAP and Brigants, look at some behavior data, and end up with some attendance data based on first semester. First up, we'll have our Associate Director of Assessment Literacy, Dr. Brooke Stinson, to talk to us a little bit about MAP.
Good evening, Board members, and Dr. Liggins. So, we're talking about MAP. MAP is our Universal Screener. It's an acronym that we use in education for measures of academic progress. It is our adaptive interim assessment that our students take three times a year. Depending on the student, the grade level content, the class, the questions can range between 40 and 53 questions per math or reading. The MAP assessment is skill-based, so it shows a mastery of our, of our students' skills, but it's also correlated on our reading and math Common Core State standards. Once our students take a, take the MAP assessment, they receive a RIT score, or also known as a ROSH unit, and this will tell our school leaders and our classroom teachers and our students that they're ready for instruction. Next slide, please. So, who takes MAP? Again, it's our Universal Screener, so all students, kindergarten through eighth grade, take this assessment, fall, winter, and spring, and we just wrapped up our, our winter window. We had a wonderful, awesome window of growth scores that we're going to share with you this evening. And again, those questions range for, for between 30 and 45 minutes, depending on the student. Again, it's adaptive. So, if a question, if a student got a question correct, it would bump up and make the, the next question harder. If they didn't get it correct, then it would make it a little bit easier, and eventually would level out to their, to their instruction. Next slide, please. So, when our students take the growth, take the math growth, growth assessment, they receive a RIT score, and this RIT scale score can also be known when we are measuring our, our children, you know, in height, and they can really see where within the standard that they, what skills they need in order to master those standards. And so, reports are given to our schools and to our, to our teachers to really to see the strengths and needs that our students can improve. Next slide, please. So, this is just a screen, the next couple of slides, just kind of share with you, when our students are interacting with the MAP assessment, what it looks like. The first screen, it pops up with their name, and they click Start Test. Next slide, please. These next two particular slides are showing the MAP assessment, and it kind of just shows you some, some different ranges of MAP assessment questions they might have. And even on the next slide, our students even interact with an online calculator, which is very important, especially with, as their students progress in school and they're taking ACT, or even the Kentucky Summit if they have an online calculator that they need to be interacting with. The next two slides show us two reading sample questions. So, our students will take, read a short passage, they'll answer a multiple choice question, and then even on the next slide, they even have a recipe that they're trying to find information and really see their reading instructional level. And then the last slide is an example of a click-and-drag question, which our students are now becoming more familiar with as they get ready to take Kentucky Summit of the end-of-the-year assessment, where they have these opportunities to really answer the questions. And so, as we move forward with MAP growth assessments that we take three times a year, our students get these RIT scales. And if you, go ahead and keep clicking, please. So, our students would get a 195, for example. It's within this range of 191 to 200. And within our Ready Common Core Reading Standard Literature Key Ideas and Details, our teachers will know exactly how to drill down on that instruction based on those skills that they need to master within that RIT range. Next slide, please. Our teachers and our principals and even the district level, we receive these norming tables every couple of years, and we just had the new norming tables in the summer of 2020, where our students could see where they need to be at grade level. These RIT scores are at the 50th percentile across all bands, are all grade levels, all contents, and so we can see typical performance of our students across the nation. Next slide, please. So, here's an example of a student, if they were to score 225, and that was their goal in the middle of winter, they just completed the MAP assessment, and so if a student scored a 247, you know, above their goal of 225, they would be in the 91st percentile. So, they exceeded their growth projectile, and then growth score, and then if they scored the 232, that's within that RIT range where they were made, they were making adequate growth, they were making, they were exceeding or basically baselining right at 50th percentile. And if they didn't quite make that 225, they reached 218 within that particular assessment, then they were below grade level at 35th percentile. And this is where our teachers would intervene immediately with tiered instruction and begin working in one-on-one or small group of instruction. Next slide, please. So, our district focuses on two different reports. The first report we're going to share with you tonight is the projected proficiency, and this particular, this particular report shares with us at any time how our students will perform on the Kentucky Summit of, of the year. will perform on the Kentucky Summit of, of the year. And then the district summary report also shares with us if our students have met or not met their projected goal at the 50th percentile. Next, Mr. Hayden's going to share with you the data.
So next, we're going to talk a little bit about the achievement part, the projected proficiency, which gives a snapshot to what potentially could be achieved on their Kentucky Summit of. Here for language arts, we can see we're at or around 48% proficient, distinguished in language arts. And then with mathematics, we can see that we're around a 35% proficient, distinguished with mathematics. So that is a look at achievement, projected proficiency, and now with projected proficiency, we have it broken down by subgroups, by our ethnic subgroups here, that we can get a better look at the exact percentage per subgroup. Next up, we have a look at our district snapshot for our growth. We talk about growth met or not met, the no's are the not met, and the yeses are the mets. And you can see for language arts, we're sitting at a 53, around 53% for yeses, and for math, we're sitting around a 55% for the yeses in meeting their goal. Next up, Dr. Stinson will give us a little background around Brigance kindergarten screener.
Brigance kindergarten screener is the first assessment that our students take before they start their first day of school. Often, this is taking place in the middle of the summer, early fall, and it's a 15 to 20-minute screener that our students will interact with, showing the front and the back of a book. They'll show, you know, walking, walking in place, even jumping, hopping, they even share their first and last name and even address. And so those skills would show if the child is ready for kindergarten. And so based on those results, Mr. Hayden's going to share with you in the next slide, our data for the last couple of years.
Here's a three-year snapshot of our Brigance kindergarten readiness. So this is by percent ready. As you can see, for the 21-22, we're sitting around a 42.5, and there is an asterisk by 2020, 2021. And if you all recall, that year, instead of taking it during the summer, going into kindergarten, our kindergarteners actually took it in March when we just returned back to school. And next up, we will have-
And if I can, Mr. Hayden, I'm sorry to interrupt, but if I can pause right there, this is one of the best examples of the impact of early childhood education, I think, looking at this, this slide right here, before students even get to our, our schools. So, but I appreciate it.
Thank you. Next up, we will have Ms. DeeDee Newbern to talk a little bit about some behavior data.
Good evening. All of the graphs that are being viewed here today are available to every school in the district to be able to have this conversation at the school level as well as we're having at the district level. We start with the circle graph, which is our office discipline referral. So the national norm is that 80% of your students will have zero to one office discipline referrals. From this graph, you can see that in Fayette County, we have 94.83% of our students who have zero to one office discipline referrals, so we are well above the national norm in terms of referral data. When we look at our grade levels across, we can see that our ninth graders right now are accounting for 28.69% of our referrals. That is followed by 10th grade with 15.21%, and then eighth grade with 13.35%. This has allowed us to provide targeted support at those grade levels around social emotional learning and other skill sets that would help to mitigate that referral data. When we look at event type, our number one event type currently is skipping class at 19.78%, followed by failure to follow staff instruction at 19.49%, and then disruptive behavior at 11.45%. We have put into place some targeted supports around each one of those, including the development and very soon to be implemented, a training on a curriculum called Start on Time that works specifically on skipping class and targeting to class for secondary students. When we look at ODRs or Office Discipline Referral by Location, we see that classroom is our number one location in which these are occurring, which is not a surprise since our students spend 90% of their school day within the classroom. We do provide targeted support to classroom teachers and classroom management and to school-level administrators and coaching classroom management, so that we can help teachers who feel they need more targeted support with students to understand the root causes of behavior within their classroom and then work to develop strategies in order to address it. Next slide, please. When we look at our resolutions right now, safe accounts for in-school suspension, accounts for 36.91% of the consequences given, followed by conference with the principal at 25.19% and out-of-school suspension at 10.41%. We are very proud to see conference with the principal within these top three of consequences given, or resolutions given, because that shows some of our work around restorative and supportive solutions, that that has bubbled as one of the more likely consequences that a student would receive if they have an office discipline referral. And we actually have the opportunity to have those conversations with their principals about what occurred and how they may make a better decision next time. When we look at our percentages of students suspended one or more time, we pull this data and compare subgroups to themselves so that we can better understand where we need to target our support, especially when we're thinking about equitable consequences across our district. So right now, you can see that 3.33% of our American Indian population has had one suspension or more, 0.45, 4, 5% of our Asian population, 5.96% of our African-American population, 2.1% of our Hispanic population, 2.94% of our Native Hawaiian population, 2.89% of our Two or More Race population, and 1.39% of our white population. Again, schools are able to pull this data individually to also look at their own percentages across subgroups and make decisions about strategies based off of their scores. Next slide, please. These two slides are going to talk about the days of instruction that are missed because of in-school or out-of-school suspension. When you look at the decimal point, I want you to actually move it over two places. We had to update our program, and actually, we did that today, so that the decimal point is in the right place from here on out. So for example, our Hispanic population, if you move that decimal point over two places, they've missed about seven days of, of school and in-school suspension per 100 students. So for every 100 Hispanic students, we have seven days of missed instructor, instruction due to in-school suspension. If you look down at the out-of-school suspension, take a look at Two or More Races, move that over two spaces, you'll see that they have missed 10 days of instruction for out-of-school suspension per 100 students. So for every 100 students who identify as Two or More Races, 10 days of instruction have been missed because of out-of-school suspension. Again, we are currently in the process and have already implemented some strategies. We had a really good meeting with our secondary administrators on December 17th that really dug into the strategies around alternatives for suspensions, and many schools, I just want to highlight Dunbar really quickly, they are in the process of developing a really good plan around alternative suspension, and that's the kind of work we see as schools pull this data on their own. They're able to dig into specific strategies to work for their students. Next slide, and I will turn this over to Steve Hu.
A good evening, board. What you have in front of you is the average daily attendance percentage for the first semester ending prior to winter break. You'll see K through five was 93.87, this middle school, 92.49, and high school at 89.18 with an overall 92.0. So let me give you a little bit of norms behind this and a couple of pieces of information also that to consider when looking at this data. So typically, our middles or elementary, we, we are normally, almost in every school, 95 and above on a normal year. On a normal year, we're typically 94 and above at the middle, and at high school, usually 92 and a half, 93, depending on the location. And typically, our overall average daily attendance at the end of the year is typically at 94.2 on a, on a normal year. So as, as with average daily attendance, as the year progresses, the attendance will, will never get, unless if we just were drastically climb higher than these averages, it typically won't climb. Also, we're in the cold and flu season, as everybody knows, and we're also trying to encourage our families to be smart about, you know, when your, when your child's not feeling well, make sure we're taking those precautions as well. So there's a lot of things that are playing into this. This is pretty normal, based on what's occurring across the state and nation. And so one of the, another fact on this is that this is a whole harmless year, so this data will not impact our, our funding for, to run our district. We will be using previous years' average daily attendance for the SEEK formula, and that was a, a good fortune that, that the legislatures voted in for us as a state, so that was, that will help us. But I will take any questions, if anybody has, has any on, on this data?
Well, before that, I just wanted to finish up the presentation, hand it off to Dr. Liggins, and talk a little bit about the last slide.
Yeah, so basically, with all of this data, these are a few things that the board can do to support us in, in what this is obviously understand and realize the impact that the pandemic continues to have on us and student learning in all aspects of, of the district as we really try to navigate this ever-ending and ever-changing pandemic. The funding for professional development days at the beginning of the year obviously would truly be helpful, particularly for effective classroom management, trauma-informed classroom, classroom practices and social emotional learning. Also investing in more social emotional learning, learning staff and our SEL curriculum continue to do so, as well as our district PDIS coaches and mental health specialists. And also, again, with social emotional learning instructional specialists for secondary and elementary would be helpful to get that funding as well as funding positions to manage our 504 and assessment coordination. And finally, student initiative that enhance and support kindergarten readiness as the Fayette Foundation, Education Foundation spoke of earlier, and Chair Murphy, you interrupted to, to reiterate, is if we continue to have our students come to us, 50% of them are behind before they even get to kindergarten. We are forever chasing our tails, so to speak, to try to, to close that achievement gap. So the more we can do before they even get to us, the better. And our teachers do a phenomenal job with, once they arrive, but as we all know, the most developmental, the most, the age where the brain develops the most is prior to kindergarten. And so having some systems in place that can really impact that would be extremely helpful in narrowing the achievement gap for us. So thank you, Hayden, as well as your team.
Thank you, sir.
We do appreciate all of you and that information. Board members, do you have any questions or comments for staff?
Chairman Murphy, I, I would just like to ask one quick question if I could.
Board member Jones, go ahead.
First of all, I want to thank the superintendent and the staff for briefing us on this previously. We had a really nice long session in which we could discuss all the data that's been presented here. That was very helpful to me. It gave me time to understand and kind of absorb the information that was in here. Really, the only question that I, I want to ask, and I guess this is for Dr. Liggins, is that this kind of data review is something that we would do again in, in June or July? Is that correct?
That is correct. We'd have this data again at the end of the year, and then in, I think it's early fall, we'll have-
Well, once accountability data rolls out and becomes unembargoed around the end of October, beginning of November, is a very opportune time to have some additional discussions as well.
Okay. Terrific. Thank you.
Thank you, board member Jones. Thank you, Mr. Hayden. Any other questions, board members? Thank you all very much. We appreciate all the work.
Thank you, Carl, and board members. Last on, under the, can't believe we're still under the superintendent's report, is Chief Operating Officer Myron Thompson. He will present the monthly construction progress report. Mr. Thompson.
Thank you, Dr. Liggins and board. And I'll keep this very brief, giving you an update on the Tates Creek High School construction project. It's not working, Bob. You can advance it. Thank you. We are roughly 79% complete on the project. As you know, it has been dried in for some time, so we're making headway inside the building in better conditions with the environment being so cold and everything. But we are finishing spaces and are moving very fast towards bringing it online this summer, going into next fall. So next slide, Bob, please. There is a overview of the lovely campus, and we're very excited. And the final piece of this puzzle will be demolishing the old building and making way for traffic improvements for the entire campus. So we have communicated with the schools about the impact to them and sort of their programming, but we are just looking so forward to bringing this building online for our students and families in the Tates Creek area. Next slide, please. For the month of December, we had concrete at the loading dock that was completed, as well as a painting in all areas of the facility. We had roof cap sheet and flashing work that occurred. Also, our trazo flooring continued in Area B and prepping in areas D and E of the facility. We had piping and duct installation in all areas as well. We've had our rubber flooring tile going down in Area A. We've started our quarry installation in the kitchen and the serving areas. We've continued our curtain wall installation in Area E and D, as well as continued our paint trazo and ceiling grid in areas A, B, and D, and we have above ceiling and duct work and piping that is continuing throughout the facility, which you will see in some of the, the pictures here. But you'll see that the spaces are coming together very nicely with the trazo and the views of the campus and the neighborhood. Next slide, please, Bob. And there again, just some exterior shots of the work that has taken place as well. And as always, these slides and information can be found on the website at tchsg.com. So that concludes my report. Dr. Liggins?
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Any questions, board members, for Mr. Thompson on the construction progress report? We appreciate it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Myron, and board team. That concludes the superintendent's report. At this time, I will turn the agenda back over to you, Chairman Murphy.
Thank you very much, Dr. Liggins, and I want to reiterate our appreciation to the community and everyone who spoke, Dr. Liggins, you and your team as well, for the gratitude and appreciation that you have shown us, not just this evening, but throughout. I kept hearing the number over 50, and I was, all those meetings were flashing through my mind as, as I heard that. So it has been a challenging year, obviously, but our work would not be possible without the support of this community, and I really think that that is a great asset, not only to our board team and our team of six, but also our entire school district, that we have such a strong supportive community behind us. So thank you all very much for that. Next on our agenda is, set aside as a time for remarks by citizens on topics that are on the agenda. This evening, we do not have anyone to sign up to speak on agenda-specific topics. We do have some individuals signed up to speak on topics that are not on the agenda, and so we will hear those at the end of the meeting, once we've conducted our business for this evening. So with that, I will move on to the approval of routine matters. At this time, a motion is in order to approve the minutes of the January 10th, 2022 Planning Work Session of the Fayette County Board of Education. Do I have a motion to that effect?
I will make a motion to approve the minutes from the January 10th, 2022 Planning Work Session of Fayette County Board of Education.
We have a motion by board member Green. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by board member Morris. Questions on approval of the minutes for January 10th, 2022? Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Next, at this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve our consent items as listed. Do I have a motion to that effect?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent items as listed.
We have a motion by board member Morris. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second by board member Green. Questions on our approval of the consent items as listed? Any discussion on the consent agenda? Hearing none? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. And at this time, I'll turn the agenda over to Superintendent Liggins to take us through the action items for tonight.
Thank you, Chair Murphy. Our next matter is a routine but very important item. In order to receive state funding for family resources and youth services centers, our school districts must annually agree to set an assurance to be included as part of the operational plan for each center. If you have any questions, Chief Student Support Services Officer Doug Adams is available to respond.
Any questions for Mr. Adams? And this is something we reviewed at the planning work session as well.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Off the hook, Mr. Adams. Thank you. If there's, are no further questions, uh, we do have a, if there are no further questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve the family resource and youth service centers' school district assurance certification, 2022, 2024, to be submitted to the Cabinet for Health and Family Services. Do I have a motion to that effect?
I make a motion to that effect.
A motion by Board Member Green. Is there a second? Second by Board Member Morris. Questions on approval of the family resource and youth service centers' school district assurance certification for 2022, 2024. Is there any discussion on the question? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries four zero. And I believe, um, that Ms. Byer stepped away, right? She had, okay. Uh, motion carries four zero.
You have a quorum. You have a quorum. Mr. Moore, are you reaching out in this time? Or is someone?
She's not quite.
Oh, okay. Yes, you're good.
Thank you. Okay. Dr. Liggins?
Thank you, Board members. Our next action is the, for this evening, is the offer of assistance from the School Facilities Construction, um, Commission. Chief Operating Officer Myron Thompson spoke to you about this during our planning work session, but he's available again this evening if there are any questions.
Any questions, Board members? Okay. If there are no questions for staff, I will entertain a motion to approve the acceptance of the offer of assistance extended by the School Facilities Construction Commission for $355,149 annual debt service on bonds to be sold for proposed construction or major renovation of facilities outlined in the Approval District's Facility Plan, subject to the approval of the Kentucky Department of Education, District Facilities Branch, per the vis- provisions of 702 KAR 4160. Is there a motion to that effect? Bonus points if you recite all of that. You don't have to.
I'll make a motion to that effect.
A motion by Board Member Morris. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Board Member Green. Question is on approval of the School Facilities Construction Commission as I just outlined. Is there any discussion on the question? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries four zero.
Thank you, Board members. Our next action item this evening is for our monthly financial report. At this time, I will ask Financial, Accounting, and Business Services Director Rodney Jackson to present the monthly financial reports.
The general fund review for the month of December 2021 reflects as follows. Actual revenues approximately 368 million, expenditures around 169 million. Our general fund balance is approximately 199 million. When you compare 2022 to 2021, you will see that our fund balance, 199 million this year versus 186 million last year. All funds, Funds One through Fund 7,000, we received 521 million. We've expended 254.5 million, and our overall net fund balance is 266.5 million. This details all funds, general fund, Fund One, all the way through Fund 7,000, which is fiduciary funds. As you can see, this ties with the red arrow, 266.5 million dollars. The revenue analysis for December reflects 368 million for 2022 fiscal year versus 336.5 for 2021. We are approximately 31.5 million dollars more this year in revenue. We have a deeper analysis taking out the beginning balances for both years. We'll see with 289 million this year versus 272 million last year, and we have 19 million, I'm sorry, 17 million dollars difference. For expenses, we have 169 million for 2022 versus 50, 150 million for 2021. We have spent 19 million dollars more, and I will explain that in more detail in a few seconds. Looking at this detail, you see the revenue for all sources reflects that we are approximately 59% related to budgets for both fiscal year 2022 and fiscal year 2021. The biggest difference in revenue is related to property taxes, 11 million dollars, um, and other sources related to that, up to 12.6 million dollars. We also have 15 million dollars more in beginning balance, which makes it up to 31 million dollars. On the expense side, our salaries and fringes are 10.4 million dollars more than the previous year. The good news is that it's 37% of budget, just like 37% of last year. So we're doing very good in that area. Well, vendor payments and, and transfers are 1% more, 27% to 26%. And we are overall approximately 19 million dollars more than the previous year. This is our investments for the year, 2022. The good news is that we were expecting only about 25,000. As of right now, we are 71,000 in investments, and I've been working with the banks, and I'm pretty sure we're gonna break 100,000 dollars this year, and that wasn't expected to happen. General fund balance sheet reflects total assets 209.7, liabilities 10.8. Our financial position remains very sound related to assets versus liabilities. If you had all of our incomers, again, these are things that we've not yet paid for, but we have intention to pay for, it'd be 11.2 million dollars. If you subtracted that from our fund balance and it became reality, it'd be 187,648,487 dollars. Our trust funds are reflected as follows. Marcy Thomas, 264,779 dollars, Dorothy Smith, 19,342 dollars, and John Price, 48,121. Our other trust funds have been reconciled at Bluegrass Community Foundation and JP Morgan Chase. This is new, um, starting this month, as I've been requested to present the reports on the summer of ESER I, II, and III. Um, you see the first grant project, ESER I, it started in May 5th, 2020, went through September 3rd, 2022. Our budget is possibly 11.1 million. We spent 10.6. And expenses today is 11.1 million. So this has been 100% spent already. ESER II, which we're in the middle of right now, starting in January 5th, 2021, goes through September 30th, 2023. Um, our budget is 45.2 million dollars. We received 23.7 million, expense today 29 million, and remaining budget 16.1 million. We're 64%. And ARP ESER III is 97.6 million, revenue received nothing. We do have some expenses in there. We're trying to figure out what that is. We're gonna look into that further. I think it's supposed to be moved to another account, but we'll verify that. And remaining budget is 97.6 million dollars. Related to safety tax summary, we received all the money related to safety tax this year related to the budget. Expenses today 16, 6.4 million dollars, excuse me. Remaining budget is 8.5 million dollars. You notice we spent 43%. Although we had 50% throughout the year, I'd like to remind you that when teachers and less than year-round staff, they have the option of getting, um, extra checks in June. So a piece of their money is escrow put aside, so they get five checks in June. That normally catches everything up. There's also incomers that have occurred that do not go against the percentage until they actually are paid out. Are there any questions or concerns?
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Any questions, uh, Board members?
Uh, Mr. Murphy, I, if you have a question, what, what does other safety include on the safety tax summary?
It could include, um, badges, um, construction-related items or renovations that we had to do, things like that. Just a hodgepodge. It was several small different items, and not to make the report too big, I just included them in that area.
Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Jones. Any questions? Any other questions, Board members?
Chair Murphy?
Board Member Green.
Um, on the ESER summary page, and this is really, I think, just to make sure that the public understands, this is the amount spent, but we have plans for all of these monies. Is that correct going forward?
Yes. Um, ESER II was primarily dedicated out to the schools. ESER III, um, Dr. Matthews working with the committee and Dr. Liggins have been putting together a plan, working with the community about how the funds will be spent.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Board members? And we do appreciate the addition of those additional slides as well and, and, uh, the work that's being done. I remember at our, the special session we had in December, um, we had talked about some of the, the planning that was going into the, the spending of those ESER funds, making sure that we're in compliance, but also making sure we're maximizing, uh, those dollars and those opportunities as well. So we look forward to, uh, seeing that work ongoing.
Thank you. And, and again, inside of your board package is the details of all of those funds, more detail. I just summarized it in this presentation.
Thank you very much.
All right.
Thank you, Board members. Our last item for your considerations-
We need to approve the report.
Oh.
You're fine. Uh, you're fine. If there are no further questions, uh, or comments, I will entertain a motion to accept the Monthly Treasurers Report of Revenue and Expenses as presented to the board. Is there a motion to that effect?
I will make a motion to accept the Monthly Treasurers Report of Revenue and Expenses reported as presented to the board.
Is a motion by Board Member Green. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Board Member Morris. Questions on acceptance of the Monthly Treasurers Report, Revenue and Expenses. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries four zero. Dr. Liggins?
All righty. Thank you, Board members. Our last item for your considerations this evening stems from an action from the Kentucky General Assembly. In accordance with Senate Bill 25, a school district may temporarily assign students to, at a school, grade, or classroom, or student group level to remote instruction due to significant absences of students or staff related to COVID-19 pandemic. This is effective until June 30th, 2022. The prior authorization from the local Board of Education, with prior authorization from you all, the decision to temporarily assign students to remote instruction shall be at the discretion of the superintendent. We believe that flexibility would be of great help, um, for our school system and, um, and would, uh, we would ask the board to grant me the discretion to be able to utilize remote learning as a tool to help mitigate the spread of COVID-19. As you will recall, a very similar, um, act was, uh, bill was passed in the Special Assembly, uh, that you all passed at that time. Uh, because it has expired, we're coming back with the very same, um, request, and this is for COVID-related closures only, not weather-related.
Thank you, Dr. Liggins. Any questions or comments, Board members? Uh, hearing none. At this time, I'll entertain a motion pursuant to Senate Bill 25 for the Board of Education to grant authority to the superintendent when, in his discretion, he deems it necessary to temporarily assign students to remote instruction due to significant absences of students and/or staff related to the COVID-19 pandemic until June 30th, 2022, for up to 10 days per school, effective retroactively on January 14th, 2022. Do I have a motion to that effect?
I'll make a motion to that effect.
We have a motion by Board Member Morris. Do we have a second?
Second.
A second by Board Member Green. Again, the question is on granting this authority to the superintendent, uh, when, in his discretion, he deems it necessary to temporarily assign students to remote instruction due to significant absences of students and/or staff related to COVID-19 pandemic, effective through June 30th, 2022, retroactive to January 14th, 2022. Any discussion on the motion? And as Dr. Liggins said, this is essentially a continuation of what we authorized back in September under Senate Bill One in the special session. And so this is additional authorization under Senate Bill 25. If there's no further discussion, then all in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries four zero.
Thank you, Board members. You may recall that you received the first draft of the report of the Health Services Court, um, from Health Services Coordinator Debbie Bull and Child Nutrition Director Michelle Kohler in December. Um, since then, we have been, um, accepting public input on the report, and tonight they have a public forum to accept additional comments. They're here tonight to share that feedback with you as well as the final version of the document.
Good evening. Um, if you will recall, the report looks like this. I don't, I don't think the folks at home can see it, but we will, we will remind you that it is in your November agenda. We had no responses on our, our online feedback site, and tonight we had no attendance at the public hearing. We will use the current report to inform our recommendations. We'll write those up and submit it to, to KDE as required. And Michelle and I would both like to take a moment of personal preference to thank you all as the board for all that you've done for our students. We've seen some heartbreaking things over the last two years. School offers hope to our children, and you all are the gatekeepers to hope. So thank you very much for what you do.
And we appreciate the work that all of you do. We know that this has not been easy on your team as well. So thank you.
Thank you, Debbie, and thank you, Board members. Our next discussion item is a possible amendment to the 2022-2023 instructional calendar. As you know, prior to my hiring, the board contracted with Four Point Education Partners to review, um, the district operations and to help guide us in our work together. One of the findings from that review was that, um, that was presented to the board in December was that the district needed to be more intentional about the placement of professional development days in the calendar by clustering them at the beginning of the year and the second semester. Research indicates more organized and targeted professional development days clustered at the beginning of the school year and the second semester yields much better outcomes for student success, teacher efficacy, and organizational success. Uh, since the board has already approved the instructional calendar for 2023 school year, taking action on the recommendation requires us to revisit that, um, board action. Uh, we discussed this during the last meeting and gathered additional input from, uh, from our staff. Um, and the Director of People's Services, Steve Hill, is here tonight. Um, if you have any questions for him about next
Any questions or comments, Board members, for Mr. Hill?
Chair Murphy?
Board Member Green.
Um, just to clarify from the beginning of the meeting, so is, is it my understanding that the, um, Calendar Committee will reconvene and look at the feedback and then report back out to the board?
Yes, ma'am. That's what, and Dr. Liggins, I don't know if you want to speak to this, but yes, that's what, uh, we had planned early in February. We're, we're gonna be meeting, uh, to look at the feedback and, uh, to give the rationale of what, um, what the feedback means. So yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, Board members? Board Member Jones, did you have a question? I, no, I just saw you unmute, so that's not gonna ask. Excellent. Uh, Mr. Hill, we appreciate you and the work of the Calendar Committee, and, um, we look forward to hearing, uh, the discussion and, and kind of what comes out of that evaluation in the Calendar Committee. So if there's anything you need from us in that process, please let us know.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Hill. Thank you, Board members. Under our informational items, agenda also includes six written reports for review, the biannual construction report, the personnel changes for January, the school activity funds report, the inter-fund transfer report, the budget transfer report, and the position control document. At this time, I will turn the meeting back over to Chairman Murphy. Um, we do have a need to go into closed session this evening.
Thank you very much, Dr. Liggins. Our next item is where members of the public may address the board on any topic of district-related concern that is not on the official agenda for the meeting. Please note that since these items are not on tonight's agenda, our board may or may not comment. It is important to know that this is not intended to be a time where issues will be debated. The chair will determine the amount of time for each speaker depending upon the lateness of the hour and the number of speakers. We have four, uh, people who have signed up to speak during this portion of the meeting. I will ask each of them to keep their remarks to three minutes or less. Uh, General Counsel Shelley Catfield, Shelley Chatfield will serve as our official timekeeper. Just a reminder to all public speakers that, uh, we do have, um, our universal masking protocols in place, uh, and those will apply while you are addressing the board. So, uh, speakers addressing the board will be asked to, uh, wear a mask for the duration of their- for the duration of their comments for the health and safety of everyone here in the room. So with that, I will welcome Ms. Alicia Dahmer to the table for public comment.
I can accept failure. Everyone fails at something, but one thing I cannot accept is not trying. Michael Jordan. Unmask the children. I have probably faced more failure and rejection in my short lifetime than all of you put together. Do you know what I did before I was the stay-at-home mom of three kids? I worked in TV. Fear of failure doesn't stop me. Fear of rejection doesn't stop me. Fear of man, of what other people think of me, doesn't stop me. Fear of this little virus doesn't stop me. If you think a little virus is scary, wait till you find out what's actually been going on the last two years. Fear has no hold on me. I am fearless because God has walked me through some fiery trials in my life, and when you come out on the other side, you become fireproof. Do you know something that comes with massive failure? Massive success if you have the courage to keep going and walk through the fire. Unmask the children. They keep telling me it's a waste of my time. They keep saying it can't be done. They tell me all the time it's impossible. No. The devil is a liar. I love what Audrey Hepburn said, "The word itself says I'm possible. What is your perspective?" I refuse to accept that. Nothing is impossible. When I was getting ready to step out in faith, I asked the Lord if this is indeed what He wanted me to do, and He said, "The Lord is with you, mighty warrior. Rise up." Judges 612. If you look in the Bible, whenever there's a group of people being oppressed, God raises up a person, a David, a Moses, and Esther, who has been sent there for such a time as this. So Pharaoh, let the children go. Let them breathe in this mask mandate. When I stepped out in faith, I did a 17-day school walkout where I refused to comply. And do you know that little jerk, the devil, didn't just come after me. He came after every single person connected to me. Everyone in my immediate family and my extended family suffered demonic attacks on their life, all because of me. Immediately after, I stepped out and said, "I will not comply. I refuse." That tells me two things. Number one, the devil isn't just afraid of me, he's terrified. And number two, I'm going to win because God is on my side, and he's on the side of all the parents that are fighting for the children. When we win, it will be not by might nor by power, but by my spirit, says the Lord God Almighty, Zechariah 4:6. I told the devil, "I'm not afraid of you, and I'm coming for Goliath. I'm coming for this mask mandate, and I will stop until it falls." I will keep coming, month after month, even if I'm the only parent standing here. And you might say, "Why are you even here? You've yanked your children out of your school system." I took them out in August, September. Why do I still keep coming? And the answer is simple. Because whether I want to be here or not, and most of the time, I don't want to be here, to be honest with you, you are my assignment, to try to open your eyes. I can't do it, but God can. The Lord said you would see me as a distraction.
Thank you, Ms. Dahmer. We appreciate your time. Our next speaker this evening is LeAnn Seaborn.
Good evening. I would first like to thank Dr. Liggins and the board for expanding tests to stay to exposures outside of school and not just in school. Secondly, I'm grateful that we have ended close-contact quarantines for students so we can minimize the time that kids are out of school. That was guidance given by the CDC back in August of 2021, so I'm glad Fayette County finally decided to follow the science. Speaking of following the science, it has been said that cloth face masks are merely face decorations. As a healthcare provider, I'm unsure why anyone ever thought a cloth mask was an effective tool to stop a virus. Joe Biden's former COVID advisor and top epidemiologist said, "We know today that many of the face cloth coverings that people wear are not very effective in reducing any of the virus movement in or out." Why are we continuing to mask our kids with cloth masks when it is pointless? There are so many research articles out there that show that it does not, that it does more harm than good. Let our kids see their teachers' and friends' faces. Another point I'd like to bring up is getting parents back in schools. I think it is past time that we allow volunteers in schools, let parents have lunch with their kids, and have in-person concerts and assemblies. If you want to help alleviate some of the burden that teachers have, let parents come back into the school buildings. Growing up, my parents volunteered every week in classrooms, all the way from elementary to high school. We need to start lifting the restrictions and get back to a normal life. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Seaborn. We appreciate your time. Our next speaker this evening is Julian Kyde.
Good evening. Dr. Liggins, I have heard excellent things about the passion, positive energy, and care you have brought to this district in such a short amount of time. And as a parent, I want to say thank you. I know you inherit a monumental task and an important position within our community that I would argue is more important now more than ever. Board members, I thank you for your volunteer time, and I speak from the heart and as a voice of reason. This will be what you could call what a board member should do, the concerned parent edition. On multiple occasions, I have challenged each one of you to listen to parents that have an up-close and personal idea of what is going on with students amidst this pandemic. I have three sons, two of which are at an incredible school within the district. Everyone inside my son's school all deserve raises, but I will save that for when I have more than three minutes to talk. This school year, my boys, like many others, have enjoyed festivities, having spelling tests, writing out homework, having a hug from a teacher, lunch with classmates, and all the important moments that go into those foundational years beyond learning itself. I easily have to stop myself from being upset in these blissful moments, hearing about their marvelous school day and thinking of what was robbed from all of them because this board decided to be one of the last to return to in-person learning. We must have a board and a central office that uses data and transparency for the rationale to back the decisions that have been made on school closures, masking, no volunteers allowed inside any schools, no in-person concerts, and the list goes on and on. My second grader does not know a year without COVID, and while that is not your fault at all, continuing masking children while they sit in their assigned desk seat in their homeroom classroom makes zero sense. While I have come to grips that my fourth grader will probably never have an in-person assembly, a school play to witness him in in person, a lunch in his cafeteria with a grandparent, an in-person orchestra concert, a time to see a smile from a teacher that is not covered daily in a cloth mask during his elementary years, I ask you, why? Why is this? Why has complacency and lack of data-driven decisions become the norm? Why has no-
You have 30 seconds remaining.
Why has no one ruffled any feathers and asked sound business questions in these meetings, other than when Tom finally said something about the middle school, which is desperately needed on our side of town in Hamburg? If the board cannot ask the hard questions on behalf of our children, I ask you to meet with a cordial and respectful group of us parents to sit down and brainstorm proper off-ramps and solutions this semester to figure out what decisions you are making that are negatively impacting-
Your time has expired.
The children of this district. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. And our last speaker this evening is Kristin Nelson.
Good evening. On the homepage of the district's, the district homepage, under the Core Values Vision and Mission section, it lists FCPS's core values. As a transplant to Lexington in 2021 and a parent of a school-aged child, I referred to this list to gain confidence and trust in the school district in which we would purchase a home. The core values listed are, one, students first; two, victory is in the classroom; three, leadership, capacity building, shared accountability, and collaboration for results are key to success; four, families are our partners; and five, it takes an entire community to ensure the success of our public schools. This list was board-approved on February 13th, 2017, and has obviously expired and is no longer valid. As of today, the list could read more like this. One, students last. Two, victory is not in the classroom. So as many NTI days can, we can access and utilize, the better. Three, collaboration for results is only limited to a privileged few who are not an accurate representation of our community. Four, families are a liability. They no longer contribute to the relationship and are definitely not considered a partner. Five, only an elect few community members are allowed to chime in on the success of our schools. Heaven forbid we work with the mayor of Lexington and county commissioners as key community members to help with transportation, road care, and community consistency with approaches to COVID. My trust, based largely on the advertised core values of FCPS, has been demolished. Repair is needed. As a parent, I am begging the school board, Dr. Liggins, to lead, not react. Plan, not procrastinate. Set thresholds and high standards, and actually put in the time, do the work, and meet them. Last year, the district was referred to as a large ship. As of today, families and students of FCPS are not even crew members or passengers on that ship.
You have 30 seconds remaining.
Instead, we are drowning overboard in a tide of poor leadership and decisions. Please save us, Dr. Liggins, and get back to the standards set in 2017.
Thank you, Ms. Nelson, and thank you to all of our speakers for your time. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to make the agenda dated January 24, 2022, on which action has been taken at this meeting, a part of the minutes as if copied in the minutes verbatim. Is there a motion to that effect?
I will make a motion to make the agenda dated January 24, 2022, on which action has been taken at this meeting, a part of the minutes as if copied in the minutes verbatim.
We have a motion by board member Green. Is there a second?
Second.
A second by board member Morris. Questions on making the agenda dated January 24, 2022, on which action has been taken, a part of the minutes as if copied in the minutes verbatim. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries four zero. As Dr. Liggins indicated, the board does have a need to go into closed session this evening pursuant to C.R.S. 61.810, Section 1, Paragraph C, to discuss proposed or pending litigation against or on behalf of the Fayette County Public Schools. The board will reconvene in open session and, if necessary, take any action required pursuant to discussion conducted during closed session. At this time, I'll now entertain a motion to go into closed session pursuant to the statute indicated.
Mr. Murphy, before we do that, I do not have a link, a link for the closed session. Would that be provided?
Okay. Mr. Morris said to remain in this link room, that he'll take care of it. That he'll take you all offline.
Okay.
So just remain in this room.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Okay. Is there a motion to enter closed session?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by board member Jones. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by board member Morris. So again, questions on entering closed session pursuant to C.R.S. 61.810, Section 1, Paragraph C, to discuss proposed or pending litigation. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries four zero. It's 8:05 PM. The board is now in closed session. The board is now in closed session.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, thank you all.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, thank you all very much. Just to let you know, a motion to leave closed session was made by Board Member Green and seconded by Board Member Jones and passed 4-0. The board left closed session at 8:07, uh, I'm sorry, 9:07 PM. We wish it was 8:07, I'm just kidding, at 9:07 PM. So at this time, a motion is in order to authorize legal counsel and the Director of Special Education to resolve an administrative matter consistent with the closed session discussion. Do I have a motion to that effect?
I will make a motion to that effect.
A motion by Board Member Green, is there a second?
Second.
A second by Board Member Jones. Question is on approval of the motion to authorize legal counsel and the Director of Special Education to resolve the administrative matter consistent with the closed session discussion. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries 4-0. This time, I'll entertain a motion to authorize legal counsel to resolve an administrative matter consistent with the closed session discussion. Is there a motion to that effect?
I will make a motion to that effect.
Motion by Board Member Green, is there a second?
A second.
Second by Board Member Morris. Question is on approval of authorization for legal counsel to resolve the administrative matter consistent with the closed session discussion. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries 4-0. The business of the Board of Education having been completed for this evening, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I will make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Motion to adjourn by Board Member Morris, or Board Member Green, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Board Member Morris. Question is on adjourning, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries 4-0, we're now adjourned, thank you all.